Talking about the budget, we were able to include in our consideration, back to the administration, both comments that we received in the public as far back as December, I believe it was, as well as online comments that we received since we released the budget last week. What we're going to do tonight, we're going to start with a presentation by Dr. Thornton, our chief financial officer, and then we will allow for individuals who have signed up to come to the microphone, and you'll have three minutes to offer to the board any thoughts or considerations that you have regarding the superintendent's proposed budget. Please be reminded that our public comments tonight are restricted to items related to the budget. We do have a business meeting next week, and it's at that time that we allow for citizens to come and speak on any agenda or non-agenda item. So I'll just ask that you respect the process tonight, keep your comments related to the budget and your thoughts around that. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Thornton, and he's going to give us another update and recap of where we are in our budget process. Dr. Thornton?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Thornton, and school board members and Norfolk Public Schools stakeholders. Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Jordan mentioned, on last Wednesday, March 2nd, Dr. Boone presented her proposed budget for fiscal year 2016-17. And what I'm going to do now, in order to prepare us for the hearing from citizens, I'm going to give you a very quick recap of the proposal, and then we'll turn it back over to the chair to open it up for citizens and stakeholder comments. Of course, as we begin to build the budget, we always want to keep in mind the purpose and the existence of Norfolk Public Schools, and that is to become a cornice on a probably diverse community. And you can see, we believe that the way in order to do that is listed there. So as we do this work, and we make some of these tough decisions, we do it in the context of what our purpose is, but at the same time, we have to deal with the realities of our fiscal situation. The board has reaffirmed its priorities. It did this several weeks ago as we prepared for the presentation of the budget, and of course, academic priorities are always number one, as we are in the business of teaching and learning. So the proposal that has been presented to the school board in terms of total operating revenues for next year, based on Governor McAuliffe's proposed budget that he presented in December, the proposed operating revenues at this point in time total 317.3 million, representing a $2.6 million increase, just under 1% increase compared to the current year operating revenue. The proposed operating expenditure budget totals 326 million, and of course, that is in excess of the proposed operating revenues that I just mentioned to you. It's in excess by $8.6 million, and we refer to that as a budget gap, where our identified needs exceed our estimated revenues at this point in time. So as we build the budget and the board continue to have deliberations, the question becomes, how do we deal with this budget gap as relates to ultimately the requests that will go to the city council for funding consideration, as well as what other potential budget balancing strategies we can engage around to close this gap? We are required by law to ultimately approve a budget that is balanced following appropriation action by the city. And to give a little historical context, apologize that the screen is not wide enough at this point for the document, but in essence, what it is, it compares our current year budget, 2015-16, to where we were 2008-2009, just before we began to feel the impact of what is now known as the Great Recession. In 2008-2009, our actual revenues totaled 324.1 million dollars. This current year's budget, 15-16, that we're operating on right now, is 314.6 million, which is 9.5 million less than where we were available revenues just seven years ago. That's significant as we continue to rebuild, reinvest, as we go forward, that again, what we identified seven years ago as needed to operate the school division then, and I'm sure at that time, we were not addressing all of the identified needs, that those resources have been reduced by $9.5 million since that time. As well, on the expenditure side, covering the same time period, expenditures, the spending, if you will, or the investment in public education in Norfolk, is down $9.5 million as well, compared to where we were just seven years ago. And as we look at enrollment trends since that time period, we know that we have, like many urban school divisions in the Commonwealth and across the nation, experienced moderate enrollment decline. Since 2008-2009, our enrollment has declined by just over 2,100 students, which represents a percentage decline of 6.8%, while at the same time, over that period, in response to not only declining enrollment, but more importantly, in response to declining revenues or resources, we were forced to reduce staffing as well. When 85% of your budget is invested in staff, and you have a $9.5 million reduction, then you've got to make some serious staff reductions. And since 2008-2009, we have reduced staff, full-time staff, FTEs, by 615, just under 13%. And we have reduced staff almost twice at the rate of enrollment decline. The major cost drivers of the operating budget, again, in comparison to where we were last year, again, 85% of the operating budget is invested in people, and that equates to salaries and benefits. So if you look at where we were last, in 2008-2009, we invested approximately $206.3 million in our people in terms of salaries. As of this year, that total is 195.3 million, representing an $11 million reduction, and that's directly related to the earlier reduction that I shared with you in staffing, where we have reduced the number of staff by 615. If you look at benefits, though, the opposite trend is we've experienced. Benefits in 2008-2009 totaled 64.8 million. As of this current year, benefit costs have actually increased to 74.4 million, representing a $9.6 million increase in employee benefits. Those are benefits that we contribute on behalf of our full-time staff, including VRS, or retirement, group life, and health insurance. So again, relating this back to the total reduction in the budget of 9.5 million, but we actually saw where we had to increase employee benefits by 9.6 million, which means that we had to make reductions in other areas over that seven-year period, and that would be the reductions you see there under operating, other operating costs of 8.1 million. Again, combined, since 2008-2009, operating budget reductions have been 9.5 million. And within that other operating cost, you have utilities, you have facility maintenance, you have other operating costs to support instruction, and the idea was that, although I wasn't here, but I would imagine, the idea was that over that seven-, eight-year period, to mitigate or reduce or try to minimize the impact on direct classroom instruction, the reductions. So that's where you see a reduction of 8.1 million in other costs. Again, within the major cost drivers, I mentioned that health insurance has increased by nearly $10 million over that time, and you can see here, our three major benefits that the school division provides on behalf of employees, VRS retirement, group life insurance through VRS, and employee healthcare. VRS has remained relatively stable, and that's because, three years ago, the General Assembly required by law that employees begin to contribute towards their retirement. You remember when that 5% reduction, when that 5% cost was passed on to employees, but at the same time, we were required to increase salaries by 5% to some degree offset that increase. So that's why VRS costs have remained relatively stable. But the major increase, again, here, is health insurance costs. Since 2008-2009, health insurance has increased by nearly $10 million, more than half, a 54% increase over that time period. And that's the amount of the school division's cost increase in an effort to mitigate passing on those increases to employees. So wherein the economy had slowed down tremendously, revenues were reduced, we were still in a position where we had to increase health insurance costs instead of passing all of those increases on to employees, and again, that was nearly $10 million. So as we approach this year's budget, the proposed budget, the major influences, again, will be compensation, health insurance, VRS retirement costs, the opening of the new K-8 STEM school, Southside Academy for STEM at Camp Ostella, the restoring of the state-mandated instructional technology resource teachers, continued implementation of our school health services program, that's outfitting each school with one registered nurse, as well as the supporting costs for that, and then other operating costs within facilities and technology. What this proposal supports, you've seen this before, it's really just a recap aligned with the school board priorities and strategic plan strategies of those items I just mentioned in the previous slide. And then, in every budget proposal where resources are not in abundance and they lag behind needs, this proposal does not, at this point in time, provide funding for expanding or providing preschool transportation services, but at the same time, we have tried to mitigate the impact of reductions to Tier One instruction or direct classroom instruction. And again, the gap, the difference between available revenues and identified needs, and as we shared with the board in the work session earlier, this 329.7 million identified expenditures are not intended to represent all of the needs of the school division. Basically, it represents some of the mandatory needs and the minimal needs to address salary and benefits for employees. It does not do any major program expansion, but at the same time, we still have an $8.6 million budget gap. And next steps, of course, tonight, we're here to hear from you all as stakeholders, and then the board will have another workshop on next Wednesday, followed by scheduled adoption on the 23rd, and then on April the 1st, we have to transmit the school board's budget, approved budget, over to the city manager and the city council for funding consideration. Mr. Chairman?
So what we're going to do now is call you to the microphone. We're asked that you give your name and your address. If you have not already signed up to speak, if you wish to do so, you can still use the next few minutes, submit your information into the school board department. But with that, we're going to proceed with our hearing, and so begins.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. We have 14 speakers signed up this evening, and our first speaker is Ms. Peggy Scott, followed by Bart Irwin.
My name is Peggy Scott. I have a grandson at Norview, and I live in Norfolk. I'm not telling my address, because none of y'all ever come visit. I have concerns about reading and math specialists on page 145 under the operating budget overview. It reads, "Reading and math specialists are being realigned at the elementary and middle's school level, which resulted in a reduction of 22 positions for a savings of $1.4 million." My 15-year-old grandson pointed out that it should read "middle" with no S on the end, and the word "school" is where the S should be placed. I have to give our teachers credit. He picked up on that error real fast. We need to make sure that there will be no cuts of specialists at the elementary level where they are needed the most. We know how important it is to read on level by the third grade. We know that the numbers of students that fail reading by third grade is how they calculate how many prisons to build in the future. I see that the interventionist number of 82 is the same as last year. I would hope that with the funding, we will have the same utilization of interventionists at all the elementary schools that we have had in the past. The rise in the math and reading scores can be attributed to the work that they have done with the students that needed the extra help. We actually need more at some of our schools. Teacher raises. And when I say teacher, everybody that works in a school, whether you're the custodian, the bus driver, anybody that connects with the child is a teacher. The 2% raise might not cover the additional increase that is projected in the insurance premiums. When are we going to get serious about paying our teachers a decent raise? The fact that they are so far behind the pay scale of Virginia Beach and Chesapeake should be as outrageous to every parent as it is to the teachers who are so underpaid. We hire new teachers, and after a few years, they leave to go to surrounding cities for the increase in pay. Teachers need and deserve at least a 5% raise. Putting on a 2% Band-Aid does not stop the bleeding. Step increases. Why do we no longer value the teachers that stick with us? Why are teachers that have been in the system 10 years making the same amount as ones with five years of teaching? At Terrleton, I lost a pre-K teacher last year with 30 years of teaching experience because she was tired of no step increases for years. Retirement has been great for her. With her retirement pay and her part-time job, she is now making more than when she was teaching and putting in long hours, writing extensive lesson plans, and purchasing needed materials for her classroom and her students. She loved what she was doing, but felt that we had failed to show her she was valuable. How many across the city have we lost and will continue to lose because of no step increases? We need to put our teachers first, and we need to pay them what our two sister cities pay theirs. Then maybe they would quit leaving to teach at the beach or in Chesapeake.
My name is Bart Irwin, and I live at 3511 Vivian Street here in Norfolk. Good evening, Mr. Jordan, Dr. Gabriel, Dr. Thornton, and the members of our school board. My name is Bart Irwin, and I come to you tonight as the math coordinator, but also as a proud Norfolk Public Schools parent and a resident of Norfolk. I'm coming tonight to advocate for the position of the elementary math specialist. I'm fully aware of the need to look at this position, and I recognize that the financial impact of having math specialists in each school is a burden that is put on you by the state. Ultimately, for whatever the reason, the state has chosen to speak to the importance of math specialists in its standards of quality without providing the necessary funding for the position. As my finance professor would state, this is the equivalent of the state telling us that they want to call the position one of want and not one of need. I'm coming to you tonight to challenge that idea and advocate for the position as one of need. We need math specialists because we already have seen the results when they are removed from the building. Four years ago, the district went from fully staffing math specialists in every elementary school to having none at all. That same year, the new curriculum standards in mathematics were adopted. That perfect storm resulted in a precipitous drop in math performance throughout the city. When the entire state's math performance dropped with the new standards, the drop in Norfolk was more severe, as you can see by the gap in the performance between Norfolk and the state widening during the year without the math specialists. Math specialists were placed back in the schools in the spring of 2013, and from that point forward, not only did the math performance grow throughout the city, but it also closed that gap that was there between Norfolk Public Schools' math performance and the state average. We are now two years away from the next adoption of new math standards, and we need our math specialists in order to not repeat history. We also need math specialists because it can be hard to teach math in today's world. Standards and curriculum continue to push our students to be able to do more than just follow traditional algorithms, but to deepen their understandings of numbers and patterns in such a way that they can apply their understanding to solve new problems. With a large amount of new elementary school teachers each year, as well as many that have anxiety about math instruction using non-traditional, student-centered strategies, we need math specialists to partner and assist in the teaching process. And finally, as a parent of a student who has struggled this year, I've seen firsthand the need for specialists. My daughter has gone through phases of not wanting to attend school due to struggling with the content. After weeks of tears each morning, the tide turned as our daughter had her first positive reports about school, when the specialist in her building began pulling her for additional assistance. That specialist presence made the difference for us as parents, as being sad at the opportunities our daughter was receiving in Norfolk, to being proud that Norfolk was doing everything that it could to help our daughter succeed. I know that the budget is tight, and I know that there's not much room to go beyond what is funded by the state. I ask you tonight that you consider full funding of every elementary math specialist as needed, as a need for our district. I ask us both so that the positions not included in the initial budget proposal might be funded, but also to ask that no further cuts be made to the position. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Catherine Sutter, followed by Christine McPherson.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Sutter of 137 East Westmont of Norfolk. I am a third-grade teacher at Mary Calcott Elementary School, and being an Atlanta native and a Navy spouse, I am proud to say that I started my teaching career here with Norfolk Public Schools. I quickly learned how valuable the reading and math specialists are. As a new teacher, the specialists guided me into understanding the curriculum, educated me on strategies and practices to help me become an effective and successful teacher, as well as helped me achieve confidence in implementing lessons and remediation in the classroom. As a third-year teacher and for those beyond, our specialists will and continue to provide us with professional development. I have been able to understand new ideas for concepts, ignite passion for teaching those difficult SOLs, and they continue to instill in us the best way to teach our children. The real reason we are all here for tonight is for those children. The school specialists allow for us to be the best educators we can be, all while guiding us and then stepping in and helping us reach those students, those lightbulb moments, making them finally understand the concept. If I could describe our specialists with one word, it would be balance. Balance in teaching us, in guiding us, in aiding in those children. My colleagues and myself feel as though our school specialists are our greatest cheerleaders. They are cheering for us, the teachers, and of course, for the kids. In regards to budget proposals, I ask that you reconsider the cutback of these valuable professionals. Continue to provide us, the teachers, and the students with the support that we need so we can give the students the top education that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Christine McPherson. My address is 1618 High Plains Drive in Virginia Beach. I am the math specialist at Mary Calcott Elementary, so I'm going to talk a little bit about why we need to save our specialists. 10 years ago, I accepted a position with NPS. I had worked, I have worked as an elementary school teacher for seven years before becoming the math specialist at Mary Calcott. I came to Norfolk as an experienced teacher. I taught in public schools in California and Massachusetts before transferring to Virginia. My first three years as a teacher for NPS were a blur, even as an experienced teacher. I felt extremely overwhelmed with the demands and needs of the district, school, parents, and students in Norfolk. Teaching in an urban district was not new to me. What was new was a level of differentiation needed to successfully teach all students in my classroom year after year. I utilized the resources I was given, attended professional development sessions at school on Saturdays over the summer. I took courses to further my understanding of the subjects I taught. I read professional development books and looked online for ideas. One day during my fifth year of teaching for NPS, a math specialist walked into my room and introduced herself. Her name was Rhonda White. That day changed my life forever. I learned to teach math with exciting, engaging, relevant lessons. I learned how to break down the math and differentiate my instruction so all my students understood it. I learned how to ask leading questions that allowed students to discover math on their own. I learned how to ask high-level questions to spur curiosity and a love of math. Because of the specialists, I grew tremendously as a teacher. Because of the specialists, I had an impact on every single student in my room. Specialists, unlike interventionists, impact every student in every classroom because they build the capacity of the classroom teacher. Every single student benefits from this. Our district benefits from this. I am also a parent of two children who struggle in math. My daughter is 26 years old. Wow, that was quick. Okay. So my daughter is 26. She was identified gifted, struggled with math her whole life. Her dream was to become a registered nurse. I watched her start and drop out of college three times because she could not pass the math courses. This has broken my heart. I'm not gonna get upset. My son, too, struggles. He struggled all through elementary school, squeaked by river the sea, and has failed math for the first time in middle school. He wants to know why. His brain doesn't work. Why he doesn't understand the math. Was it his teachers' fault? No. They did not know what they did not know. They did the best that they could with what they had. So I stand before you tonight, asking you to reconsider cutting the specialists.
And if you have a written statement, would you please turn that in so I can record that in the minutes? Thank you so much. And just as a reminder, you are limited to three minutes. Our next speakers are Linda Stokes, followed by Nancy Estepa.
Two weeks ago, on a Saturday night, we're going for some much- 7:30 at night. I stop in the store to get a bottle of wine that I need to enjoy, and at the light, getting ready to go to the store, I'm next to a school bus. 7:30 at night, on a Saturday night, when they've worked 10 to 12 hours all week long. I'm needing, we all need that downtime, but for some reason, bus drivers don't get that downtime. I don't know why. I don't understand why a person who has a family and probably kid is out for us at 7:30 on a Saturday night. When you talk about giving them a 2% raise, you're talking about 25 cents an hour, a dollar and 50 cents a day. So maybe that's why they're out there on a Saturday night after working 10 hours all week long, because a dollar 50 cent a day won't get them much more. But anyway, that's about the bus drivers. I'm gonna talk also about their attendance, who don't have contracts, and who absolutely will not get a penny of that 2% raise. They are stakeholders also in our children. One back there probably will tell you, she's been there 10 years as a substitute, because all the monitors are substitutes. 10 years without ever getting a raise. And what they would like for you guys to show them is that you appreciate. Of course, they says, "Well, okay, you can go someplace else, you know, but you can at least they're all contracted." Or you could go to Zumpa, because their bus monitors are contracted also. But like I said, they feel they are stakeholders also in this school system.
Check one, two?
Yeah. Not only is it bus assistants that won't see anything, anybody, anybody that's a substitute, how about classroom people? You have janitors that are substitutes and have been substitutes for years. The children, they help the children also. They help provide a clean environment for the children to be in. They help to feed them so that they will be able to learn and to progress, and they also help to get them to school every day. We got bus monitors where the kid won't step on the bus unless that particular person is there. So they deserve to be recognized. They never get any awards, they never get any raises, and they never get any thanks, not by y'all. I've seen, I've seen parents, parents at the end of school, giving them gifts and giving them stuff because they know they are needed and they are special. So like I asked, please consider those who are there year after year after year, and help them too, to continue to want to stay and to want to be stakeholders in our children's education.
Thank you. Mrs. Estepa?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. Y'all probably don't want mine, because I just wrote it. This year, I'm fresh out of the classroom. So first, I would like to speak to you as a teacher. As a teacher, my math specialist changed my life as an educator. Teaching is hard. Even if you read the curriculum with a fine-toothed comb, specialists are the people that help teachers understand how the curriculum looks. Not just what to teach, but how to teach it. This is especially helpful for new teachers or teachers who have changed grade levels. For me, my math specialist was a catalyst to transform me from a first-year, third-grade teacher to a fourth- or fifth-year, third-grade teacher in a year. With her guidance, I had to spend much less time learning from trial and error. Indeed, she impacted all Tier 1 instruction in our building. As a math specialist at PB Young, I feel I am making an impact at a building level as well. I think our data is showing that. Our most recent district benchmark assessment shows that PB Young's average is above district averages, and I'm very proud of that. Woo! I would love to see how improving instruction in a K-2 setting impacts 3rd- to 5th grade. Being at a K-2 school has been amazing because I am able to focus on kindergarten through 2nd grade. Many of my colleagues in a K-5 or K-8 school will tell you that their main focus is the upper grades or the testing grades. The students who struggle in the upper grades are students without support in kindergarten through 2nd grade. Every support person counts. Math specialists don't just have value, they are invaluable to the teachers and children of our district. Our increase in math scores across the district can justify that. We have to be creative every day. We have to use creative ways every day to meet the needs of our students. I have faith that you all can find a creative way to fund our positions so that we can continue to build the capacity of teachers and students of Norfolk Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Elena Allgren R. Glenn and Joshua Stone.
Thank you. Hello. I am a teacher at Fairlon Elementary, Norfolk Public Schools graduate, future Norfolk Public Schools parent, Norfolk taxpayer, so I'm all the above. I was exactly that teacher that Mr. Irwin was talking about, who was a first-year teacher, came in in December, was terrified to teach math. All through school, I hated math. It was the one subject that I didn't want to teach. And my math specialist was my life support my first year, and she still is. She changed my whole view on teaching math and turned me into a teacher who thought that I had to just follow the textbook to someone who believes in hands-on manipulatives and real-life learning. As a taxpayer and a teacher, I know that money is tough, so I understand that we need to make budget cuts, but I believe that our students are what matter, and I believe that my math specialist I know has affected me, which has helped affect every student in my building. Sorry, I'm nervous. So I just ask that you guys just really take that into consideration and look at the people who are making a difference in our schools. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Joshua Stone.
I am a Norfolk native. I grew up in Norfolk. I attended Chesterfield Elementary School, this year, Ruffner Middle School, and graduated from Granby High School and Old Dominion University. I'm also currently in my fifth year of teaching in Norfolk Public Schools, and I am a member of the Norfolk Federation of Teachers. This evening, I would like to give you some statistics and facts regarding the current level of compensation paid to teachers in Norfolk. My hope is that with this information, you will be able to better understand the currently poor morale among teachers in Norfolk and the public dissatisfaction with the state of our schools. I want to start with something personal. I started teaching in 2011, and my five years of proficiency in teaching, the experience, the long hours and hard work in education have only achieved me a $13 increase over those five years in take-home pay. I'm currently only on Step 2, when I should be on Step 5 of the Norfolk teacher salary scale. And as far as I know, most teachers are in the same situation. I've never been on Plan of Action. I've never even received a letter of concern. The simple facts are this: Norfolk does have the highest teacher turnover rate in Hampton Roads. Many people have speculated about the reasons for this, but I can tell you outright that uncompetitive pay, a complex 83-page evaluation system, a challenging teaching environment, and absolutely no incentive to be a great teacher are to blame. Teachers can work with one, maybe two, maybe three of these situations, but all of them combined is driving us out of the city. According to the Virginia Department of Education, the city of Portsmouth's average teaching salary is $3,500 more than Norfolk. Virginia Beach and Chesapeake are paid over $8,000 a year more than teachers in Norfolk. I think maybe you can understand why we aren't just frustrated anymore. We are leaving. Other school systems are actively seeking out Norfolk teachers because they know we work hard. As teachers, we want to see our school board fight for our students, our staff, and our city. Demand that City Council find the money. They can, and they will. If Portsmouth can do it, Virginia Beach can do it, Chesapeake can do it, then so can we. You do not get a great city without great schools. If you truly want to have the best schools in Hampton Roads or even the state, you have to attract and retain the best teachers and staff. Do we, the teachers, care about our students and their success? Yes. But I also have kids, and I have to think about what types of opportunities I can provide them. And currently, Norfolk does not allow me to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Alice Bullock, followed by Courtney McPherson Barber.
Good evening, Dr. Boone and, um, school board members. Excuse me. My name is Alice Bullock. I reside at 760 Denison Court, Norfolk, Virginia. I have been a bus driver for 38 years for the city of Norfolk. And I want to say that I got the meetings mixed up. This is a budget meeting, right? My paper is talking about something else. So you all will see me March the 16th, because I want you to hear what I have to say. And we do need a raise. I will say that. We do need a raise. We need money. The children is off the chain. We working day and night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Boone and school board members. My name is Courtney McPherson Barber, and I'm a 30-year employee with the Transportation Department of Norfolk Public Schools. And tonight, I have my coworkers with me, because we are all here to ask for some money. So can y'all please stand? Since this is budget, we're gonna stick to budget and make it simple, short, and sweet. Dr. Thorne. Um, you, uh, wait a minute. Okay. We want to know, on the budget paper that we have, it says equip the buses with digital surveillance, with a GPS, um, and Wi-Fi for the buses, so the kids can learn on their iPad while they're traveling to and from school. Well, with a GPS, getting through Norfolk, and if you work in Norfolk and drive on the base, that's gonna be hard to do. For the parents to pinpoint us where we're at. What we're doing now is tough getting from one school to another, and if we don't get there on time to get them there, then some of the principles are good, some are not. And they fussing at us, we're doubling up on kids. I mean, we're running ragged. Sometimes, we have to do extra speed to get the kids to school so they can eat breakfast. Two, I ask you, why Wi-Fi? Well, when they get to the school bus in the afternoon, it's a field day for them. At the end, by the time their ride ends, the bus driver is hoarse, because you're asking them to sit down. Stop talking now. Stop cursing. Stay out of the aisle. Again, all of this takes 2%. So we're figuring 2% for the GPS, 2% for the Wi-Fi. Give us, bus drivers, that 4%. We'd be doing something. So, y'all tell us we're doing a good job. Why don't y'all show us a good job that we're doing in our paychecks? I'm using myself as an example. My last paycheck, don't y'all laugh, two weeks ago, last Friday, was $5.62 take home. And I've been here 30 years. I only get $5.45 a day, and I have to get two more hours, and they take 15 minutes of that because they say I'm under a contract pay for six hours. So in actuality, I'm only working 45 minutes to make up my time. At the end of the day, I can't get any field trips or anything extra because they say I'm close, too close to eight hours. Now, this is eight hours I don't see it. So at the end of the day, with me being here 30 years and all I can bring home is $5.62 every two weeks, it's embarrassing and it hurts. So we ask y'all to consider a little more than 2% to us that's like crumbs. And when everybody get through eating, we all know what we do with crumbs. We just scatter them because they're no good to us. So we don't want the crumbs. We want a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Shanoa Perry, followed by Jeff Hewitt.
Also, my speaker is coming. You all were trying to refrain from talking while the speaker is talking, partly because of the echoes in the room. So do I have any respect for the loud speaker's speech?
Ms. Perry?
Oh. Good evening, school board members and Dr. Boone. I attended. My name is Shanoa Perry. I reside at 918 Providence Road in the city of Chesapeake. But I have been employed with Norfolk Public Schools for 21 years. I am here on behalf of the professional Norfolk Public School bus drivers. Y'all stand up with me. I would like to first to take this opportunity to thank the school board for listening to all our concerns for the whole entire school year. But we still need some help. We stand here tonight in deep concern for our department. We are really losing drivers. We can barely stay afloat. Y'all say at 2%, they're gonna leave again. We can barely get these children home. We get them to school, we say, "Lord, we thank you." We get them home, we say, "Lord, we thank you." Y'all say 2%. We are professional drivers, and we should be paid so. Garbage men, trash trucks, and even the mailmen bring home more money than we do. And we are transporting your precious cargo, which is y'all children. Show us some appreciation and take a closer look at that budget, because we can no longer live off 2%. When we're giving you 100% daily, rain, sleet, and snow. When I started, the pay was $5.70. The drivers starting today is $12.70. You do the math. Thank you. Have a good night.
My name is Jeff Hewitt. I am at 522 Spotswood Avenue in Norfolk, Virginia, over in Ghent. My daughter is a young scholar who attends classes in this building every day. And I am here to speak to you about the need to increase funding for the Gifted Education Program. To do that, I need to paint you a picture. My daughter gets up every morning at 6 o'clock in the morning on her own, with nothing from me. She sets her alarm clock at night, gets up in the morning, gets herself ready for school, goes out and catches the bus. She comes here every day where she thrives and excels. She serves as a mentor to the 6th graders that are coming into this program. When I asked her, you know, "Why do you, why do you want to help the 6th graders? Why are you doing that? Is that, is that getting you anywhere with your classes? Is that something you should be spending time on?" She told me that she feels a responsibility to make things easier for the kids that are coming in after her. This is the kind of kid that we're talking about here. She does every extracurricular program that she is asked to do. She comes home and, without any prompting from me, begins doing her homework, organizing for the next day, and is quite often up until 10, 11, sometimes midnight, handling the very rigorous coursework. The rigorous coursework of this program, which is the reason that I bought a home in this city, so that she could go to it. You know, and she's not a straight-A student because she's taking very hard classes. She's not in average classes that would be easy for her. She took the hard path. We have applied to the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program and were shocked to discover that she would not be receiving an interview to attend this program. I'm not even saying get into the program. I'm saying an interview where she could be evaluated by the program directors to be considered for it. I have engaged in rigorous and vigorous dialogue with these educators, whom I have nothing but the highest respect for. I know it's a tough job. I know that you guys are working very hard to find money for these things. And I was told flat out that the reason that there are not enough slots for these children is because the Gifted Education Budget is not what it should be. I have begun my own research on this, and I will be continuing to research it. But from the best that I can tell, the Gifted Education Budget was cut in 2010 and has yet to be restored to the 2010 level. I hear you guys say that you have a legal responsibility to make a balanced budget, that this is transitioning into an elected school board. You are no longer the administrative arm of the City Council. You have the opportunity, and I feel the moral responsibility, to advocate for these children, to ask for the budget that you feel you need, not the budget that City Council gives you, not the numbers that they say you need to try and hit. It's, you don't have the ability to raise funds, that's their job, and I will be appearing at those meetings as well. So you guys will see me again. I thank you for all of your efforts, and I implore you, please, raise these funds for the children that are destined to sit in the chairs that you hold now. Thank you.
Thank you. The last two speakers this evening are Basima Cumberbatch Smith and Vicky Greco.
My name is Basima Cumberbatch Smith. I reside at 8007 Crescent Road here in Norfolk. I am the mother of a 7th grader in the Young Scholars Program. I'm also the current Recording Secretary for the Gifted Education Advisory Council, Advisory Committee. So I'm coming to speak to you on behalf of Gifted Education, like the gentleman that spoke before me. A big part of our concern as the Gifted Committee is that Gifted Education is not being funded equitably. We say with our words that we value students who are achieving above. However, we're not funding a budget that reflects that. We're asking that you note the requests that the Gifted Advisory Council has given. We submitted a letter to the board recently. We ask that you keep Gifted Education in the forefront of your minds and, as I said, equity. We look at Lakewood. I see that you've committed to a year or two for Lakewood, and I call it New and Shiny. We love New and Shiny, but I feel like all kids, all of the gifted kids in Norfolk deserve to receive funding, not just the crown jewel. As a teacher, because I'm also- As a teacher, because I'm also an educator here in Norfolk, I would love, I left Norfolk and I came back, and I was confused by the step system. People who I left, I came back, and I was almost in the same place that they were. I think the step system is confusing. I think it's almost set up to keep us confused as to how much we should be making.
Yes.
So I hope that, yes, we've talked about 2% increase. The last time we got an increase, we knew it was to cover insurance. The truth is, most jobs, you get a cost of living increase. Every year, the cost of everything goes up. We all know as educators, we're coming out of our pockets to fund lots of things that we ought not to be funding. I have parents that make more than I do, and I'm coming out of my pocket to pay for things that is not, they're not being funded. So please, consider in your budget both Gifted Education and for us teachers who are sacrificing. I will tell you, today, we had a conversation about the mass moving of teachers out of the district. It's time for us as teachers to put our intent cards in, encourage us to stay in Norfolk. We committed, when I moved here from New York, because Norfolk was on the cutting edge. It was above everybody else in this area, but I've seen a steady decline in the last 12 years from the Nobel Prize winners to what we've become. I'm hoping, I've stuck with Norfolk because I believe in Norfolk, that we can be great again. Thank you.
Oh, goodness. I'm not going to break it. I promise. We can't afford it. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Jordan, Dr. Gabriel, school board and cabinet members, Dr. Boone and fellow stakeholders. My name is Vicky Manugo-Greco, and my address is 1433 Brunswick Avenue. As a very proud MPS graduate, I can honestly say that both my husband and I look forward to the day when we can say the same of our own three children who are students in grades four, seven, and nine. Currently, I serve on both the Gifted Ed Advisory and the Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, Community Coordination Committees for the School Division, as well as advocate for MPS as a member of Norfolk Gains, the League of Women Voters of Southampton Roads, and the Proudly Diverse Caucus. I last addressed you on December 2nd, Dr. Boone's second day on the job, regarding the proposed 2017 budget. Before joining you all here tonight, I looked over my budget hearing statement that I made then, and I must confess that my thoughts and requests have changed very little. Please indulge me now as I try the other three Rs. Reduce a bit, so I'm just under the three-minute time limit, a first. Data, we use data to emphasize what I think is our greatest budget need, and just recycle my requests because while difficult choices are always part of our division's and city's budget planning, we must remember our dedicated teachers on the front line must make difficult choices to care for their families financially every day. Tonight, I respectfully ask again that the division's fiscal year 2017 budget request is refined with clearer focus on the financial needs of the very people who make the largest difference in the education of each and every student in our school system, our teachers, who should be treated better than not your ordinary city workers, but the extraordinary teachers they are. Tonight, I'll focus again on the biggest priority I see on the MPS wish list, teacher compensation. We know that last year, the average MPS teacher salary of $49,908 fell short of the averages of teacher salaries in Virginia Beach and Chesapeake by $6,358. That's a substantial amount. Last year, the MPS average teacher salary fell below the state average by over $3,900. Again, another significant amount that affects the financial well-being of our teachers. I'll say this again: Because our teachers can't afford certain items in their own budgets, the division cannot afford to continue to ignore the mythical step increases listed in the division's current pay schedule, which I hope will be reevaluated and restructured accordingly to ensure that our veteran teachers, the highly qualified and effective educators we seek to attract and keep, feel just as valued as our newly hired teachers beginning their careers. I am trying to keep this real. I hope that along with Dr. Boone's recently announced department realignment, there is an immediate review and realignment of the compensation structure. I hope that school leaders, and especially our city leaders, take a long, hard look at the salaries of those current teacher veterans who have worked to teach our kids in good times and bad, who have so far demonstrated their admirable commitment and resilience, resiliency over the past several years, which most might argue as terribly troubled times in our school system's history. It's my hope that our teachers, like my dear high school friend who shared her own family's financial challenges with me and who is now a high school teacher herself, will know most confidently the value of their good work as educational professionals because they see it in the money they earn, the instructional supports they're given, and the grateful smiles on the faces of the students and families they serve every day. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan, that concludes the speakers that have signed up.
I will, on my part, I'd like to, again, thank everyone for coming out and sharing the thoughts with us, I mentioned earlier. We did have a workshop over today. We heard your comments tonight. We also have shared thoughts as a board, back to the administration. So all that they've heard tonight, in addition to all that we've discussed, is going to be factored into the next iteration of what we're going to see next week. Dr. Boone, if there's any final thoughts you may add.
I certainly want to thank everyone for your attendance and for those who spoke this evening. We take this process seriously, I do as a superintendent. Chaplain, time to come in in December and have to build a legacy, Dr. Thornton and the board and everyone else, but we will do our utmost best because, as you've heard me say any number of times publicly, the principals are our generals on the front line, and our teachers are the attendants doing it, bringing them home each and every day. The drivers have heard me say to them, "I value them," and know the difference that they make in greeting our children first thing in the morning and making sure that they get home safely. See, my grandfather was a high school principal, and what my grandparents taught me was that the difference between success and failure for most folks is opportunity. And we are opportunity generators in this district, and we have to do it for our employees. Ever wondered a lot yet? Can't predict yet, but we hear what you're saying. My responsibility to the board, to this community, to all of our employees, is to bring us out of our place we've been for quite some time and see if we can get over the hump. It won't all happen in this first year, but we will continue to work with you on that. So thank you for your interest in being here and your comments tonight.